Good evening, and welcome to the Douglasville City Council Regular Voting Meeting of Monday, November 3rd, 2025. Yes, a quarter of the century through this 21st century. Tonight we will have our invocation presented by the Most Honorable and Reverend Andrew Dickinson, the Associate Pastor of First Presbyterian Church, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance by Councilwoman Nicole Miller. Please rise.
As you are able, please join me in a word of prayer. Almighty God, we humbly ask that we may prove ourselves to be a people mindful of your ways and glad to do your will. Bless our land with honorable industry, sound learning, and pure conduct. We ask that you save us from discord and confusion, pride and arrogance, and every evil way. Defend our liberties and fashion into one united people those gathered here from many kindreds and tongues. We ask that you grant a spirit of wisdom to those we entrust with the authority of government. We pray for Mayor Robinson, Mayor Pro Tem Miller, and our city councilors who serve with them. We thank you for their willingness to serve, for their dedication and their labors on behalf of our community. We pray that you would be with them and guide them in the work that they do. Finally, we ask that you renew us with your presence, empower us with your goodness, that we may build a community that is a blessing for all who live, work, learn, and grow within it. We ask these things in your holy name, confident of your goodness and love. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which sustains us, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice as our own.
Thank you, Councilwoman Miller, for the Pledge of Allegiance, and thank you, Reverend Dickinson. As always, it's an honor to have you here tonight. All right, we will launch into tonight's meeting, but before we do that, of course, we have to read the rules. And here they are. We would like to welcome you to tonight's legislative work session. I am Mayor Pro Tem Terry Miller. Tonight's -- reading the wrong one. This is a city council regular meeting, not legislative session, which means that official action will be taken tonight. We will be playing with live ammunition. Agenda items tonight were discussed during the legislative work session on the previous Thursday night. If the business you are here for is not listed as an agenda item, there will be ample time under the Agenda Item Comments from Citizens and Delegates section to discuss your business. Protocol for tonight's meeting will be as such. Please keep your comments and presentation on a professional level, dealing with the facts that are important to this governing body to make their decision. We will not accept comments that are considered by the chair to be a personal attack on any individual or group of individuals. You will receive a warning from the chair if you deviate from this requirement. A second deviation will result in a request that you leave the chambers and premises for the evening. Only one person will be talking at a time. Please do not applaud or react to speakers, speak from the audience, cheer, clap, carry on a conversation with others in the audience, or disrupt the order of this meeting in any way. We are only required to accept public comment during required public hearings. We are not required to accept public comment on other items for this council. If you have a cell phone or other electronic device, please power it off or put it into a silent mode at this time. Agenda items will be handled as follows. Committee Chairperson will read the agenda item, then the person representing the agenda item or the applicant will make his or her presentation. The mayor and members of council will possibly ask questions of the applicant, maybe they won't, or seek additional information. Because these items were discussed on Thursday night during our legislative work session, we will not take questions or comments regarding each item during this meeting. But tonight is a voting meeting, and we either move to approve, deny, or take no action on each item as presented. Prior to approaching the podium, if you're going to speak, please fill out one of the speaker's signing cards that is right there near the podium, and give that card to -- if you can get to the city clerk, if not, give it to one of our assistant city managers. This is not a question-and-answer format. It is not a debate format, even though it may sound that way at times. We're here to receive information regarding agenda items. Please address your comments to the chair, not to members of the audience or the applicant or city staff. When I left out, make sure you read -- mention your name and address when you come to the microphone to speak. Printed information should be given in advance to the city clerk's office for distribution to the council members. All right, I think that about covers all of it. And we have no announcements or other announcements or presentations tonight, so we will move on to the first agenda item, and that is the approval of the agenda itself. So you understand that we actually have to approve our agenda before we can actually vote on the agenda items. So I will open the floor at this time for a motion to approve the agenda.
So moved.
Councilman Estes has made a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second from -- is that Councilwoman Miller? Okay. Any comments or questions about the agenda? And all in favor of approving the agenda, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The agenda is approved for this evening. Next, we will look at the approval of the minutes for October 16th, 2025, which includes the committee and the legislative work session, as well as the minutes of October 20th, 2025, which includes the committee's executive session and regular meeting. I will open the floor for a motion to approve the minutes from those dates as said.
So moved.
Councilman Estes has made a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
Councilwoman Hudson has made the second. Any other comments or questions regarding the minutes or annotations, notes? Hearing none, all those in favor of approving the minutes, please say aye at this time.
Aye.
Any opposed? Minutes are approved as noted. Now we move on to the consent agenda, and I will open the floor for a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented.
So moved.
Councilman Estes has made a motion to approve. Is there a second? Say it.
I'm getting a mirror message.
We had a triple thing there. What did we have? Who do we have on?
Can you just raise your hand? We'll be elected.
Okay. We have a -- I'm going to say that was Councilwoman Watts, I think, who made the second.
I had down --
That was my guess.
Councilwoman Estes made the motion, Ms. Hudson second.
Okay, Councilwoman Hudson made the second. All right, any comments or questions or thoughts regarding the consent agenda? All right, hearing none, then all those in favor of the consent agenda, please raise your hand. If there are -- if there are any opposed to the consent agenda? Likewise, seeing none, the consent agenda is approved as presented. All right, we will now move on to the separate committees at this time, and the first committee is the Economic Development Committee, and I will go turn to the Vice Chair of the Economic Development Committee, which is Councilwoman Nicole Miller.
Thank you, Mayor Pro Tem. We have no business this evening.
Thank you, Councilwoman Miller. We now move on to the Finance Committee chaired by Councilwoman Watts.
Thank you, Mayor Pro Tem. We have one item under Finance tonight. Authorize the mayor -- I'm sorry. Authorize the city to purchase 6717 Church Street, Douglasville, Georgia, the property for the price of $425,000, and authorize the mayor to sign the purchase and sale agreement for the city of Douglasville, Dougsville's purchase of the property and all other closing documents to effectuate the transfer of the property to the city. And Ms. Jordan, Ms. Hampton, anything on this that wasn't covered on Thursday?
No, sir, and there have been no changes to anything regarding the agreement that was presented on Thursday as well.
So we are full steam ahead on this?
Yes, sir.
All right.
With your authorization, of course.
I'm sorry?
With your authorization, of course.
Of course. Do we have -- Mayor Pro Tem? I'm sorry. Councilman Estes, I saw you clicked your button over there. Are we turning it off? Okay, any questions or comments from council? All right, with that being said, I would like to make a motion to approve item 25-445.
Second.
We have a motion to approve. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second from Councilwoman Miller. Any further discussion or comment regarding this item? Hearing none, all those in favor of approving item 25-445, please say aye, and raise your hand.
Aye.
Any opposed? Seeing none, item 25-445 is approved.
Thank you, Mayor Pro Tem, and that is all we had under Finance.
Thank you, Councilwoman Watts. Our next committee is Housing and Community Affairs. That is chaired by Councilman Estes.
Thank you, Mayor Pro Tem. The Housing and Community Affairs Committee has no business, nor does the Personnel and Organization Committee, just to get ahead, so you don't have to come right back.
Well, I am going to come right back.
Thank you.
This is your show. You are the ranking member on legislative and governmental.
Okay, well, we also have no business for legislative and governmental. Thank you.
I knew I could catch you off guard there. All right, moving right along, we come to the Planning and Development Committee chaired by Councilwoman Nicole Miller.
Thank you, Mayor Pro Tem. We do have one item this evening. This is item number 25-428. Says to consider a proposed ordinance to amend subsections 2.02, 2.05, 4.03B, 4.04B, 4.05B, 4.07B, 4.08B, 4.11C, 5.03B, 5.04B, and 5.05B of the Unified Development Ordinance to provide additional clarification regarding gas station requirements and special land use permits. Application by the city of Douglasville. Mr. Dana Gray is on here to go over this item with us.
Good evening. Dana Gray, 6695 Church Street. I do not have any updates for these items, but just a reminder that if you approve, what goes along with the canopy is a condition that the canopy is restricted to a front yard setback of 25 foot, and it is written in the ordinance.
Okay, and anything less than that would still have to come for a variance. Is that correct?
Correct, yes.
Okay. I don't know about you guys, but I have absolutely no information going on right now. With my iPad, it's just saying error. So if you guys -- I've got the information in here. I've read it several times. So if you guys need any information, I've got it in paper form for you. If not, then I'm prepared to make a motion that we approve item number 25-428.
We have a motion on the floor to approve item 25-428 for approval. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second. Is there any further discussion, questions, or issues with this item?
Second.
I'm guessing that was not for this. Okay. Hearing none, then all those in favor of approving item 25-428, please say aye and raise your hand.
Aye.
Any opposed? Seeing none, item 25-428 is approved as presented.
Thank you, Mayor Pro Tem. That is all that we have this evening for planning and development, and we have no business this evening for public impairment and beautification.
Thank you, Councilwoman Miller. Moving right along to the Public Relations Committee. Our vice chair is Elena Hudson.
Thank you, Mayor Pro -- Mayor Pro Tem. We have no business under the Public Relations Committee this evening. I don't even know what I called you. I'm sorry.
I'm not sure what you called me. Probably just, well, I don't know. Thank you, Councilwoman Hudson. Next up is the Public Safety Committee. The vice chairman is Councilwoman Watts.
Thank you, Madam -- Mayor Pro Tem. See?
I'm going to call people -- I'm trying to call people out of order here.
Councilwoman -- I'm going to blame it on Councilwoman Hudson down here. Mayor Pro Tem, we have no business tonight under public safety, and we have no business tonight under recreation, culture, and tourism.
I'll pay you records.
Thank you, Councilwoman Watts. Just for the record, I have been called worse. I probably deserved it. The next committee is the Technology Committee. Councilwoman Elena Hudson, you may take that.
Thank you, Mayor Pro Tem. We have no business under the Technology Committee this evening.
How have things gotten so out of order? The next committee is the Transportation Committee, and Councilwoman Hudson, you're the ranking member. I'll give it back to you again.
Thank you, Mayor Pro Tem. We have no business under the Transportation Committee. I'm so tired, y'all. I'm sorry.
I'm going to have to gavel you guys to order. It's out of control. All right, moving on to other businesses. Any council member have anything that they'd like to add or comment about at this time other than -- it's too bad. Too bad we couldn't show the recognition for the police department that they received during the committee meetings. But Chief, if you want to talk a little bit about what we saw today, went through today at the Caleo Award, let's see that put on the legislative meeting record as well.
Yeah, today we can call it mission accomplished for, you know, Caleo Award for the city of Douglasville Police Department. It's a nationally recognized award, and it ensures that our standard operating procedures and that we are in line with the National Caleo Association in having our reviews of our standard operating procedures and making sure that we are in line with other law enforcement agencies that already have been accepted by Caleo. So this has been a long process. We've been trying to get it done for over a year, and it's been one of my goals and visions. And I just want to thank the police department for seeing the vision and taking hold of the vision and making sure that this happened, and we couldn't have done it without the support of the mayor and the council and city manager's office. So we just thank you all for giving us the opportunity to receive this award.
Thank you, Chief. You guys did an exceptional job. It's primarily on you guys. Just to know that this is an award given to something, I think, present or explained about 5% of the police departments in North America. To know you're in that high of an elite is absolutely truly tremendous, and the people of the city should be proud of the officers who serve them and protect them every day. So thank you so much, Chief, for what you've done.
Thank you.
We will move on now to the updates from city staff and our city attorney, Mr. Joe Johnson.
No business, Mr. Mayor Pro Tem.
Thank you, sir. I have to learn Latin now. Our staff attorney, Ms. Miranda Jordan.
Not me trying to sit here and not mess up your name, Mr. Mayor Pro Tem. I have no business this evening.
All right. Chief Police, Gary Sparks. Do you have any?
No business, Mayor Pro Tem. I had to look at --
Everybody has to think.
You gotta know one.
All right. City manager, please bring us back to sanity here if you can.
Some level of decorum.
Yes, decorum. That would be really useful right now.
It's late. What I would -- we do -- I do have one item, just to remind you all about your series of meetings during the week of Thanksgiving. So just to remind you that we will be meeting that Tuesday, the 25th. That will be your legislative meeting, and then we will return on Monday, the 1st. So believe it or not, we really only have three series of meetings left for the remainder of the year. Your last meeting for the calendar year is December 15th. So if there was something that you wanted to be heard before the end of the calendar year, let us know, because we're quickly approaching. We won't have committee meetings on that Tuesday, the 25th. My assumption is you all are going to want to, and staff, be ready to move on to the Thanksgiving holiday. That's all I have, and I just need a quick, very quick executive session for an update for you all. And that's it.
Thank you so much, city manager. Now is the time in the evening that we turn to comments from citizens and delegates. If you have managed to withstand the revelry that's been going on and would like to speak and add to tonight's agenda, please come down and state your name and address for the record and tell us what you're thinking. Got to change it up every now and then. All right, seeing no one here, then I will close that portion, and I will now open the floor for a motion to go into executive session to discuss property disposition and acquisition.
So moved.
Councilman Estes has made the motion. Would somebody like to second that?
I'll second that, Mayor Pro Tem.
Councilwoman Hudson has seconded it. Any discussion prior to the vote? Seeing none, all those in favor of adjourning to executive session at this time, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? We are hereby adjourned into executive session.